Yeah, it's not coming in, it's not coming to the desk for some reason. I probably need to...
Is that not working?
I mean, it's working, yeah.
It's not writing my patchwork though, right?
Okay, I...
Wait, I don't even see that. Oh, there it is. Oh, maybe over here.
The admin is working. Think about getting a look there?
Yeah.
That's probably how it will be tomorrow.
Ice cream not working.
Um, yes, access isn't working, but the admin is working. It's probably what you said, the, um...
Open password.
Yeah, it's open password for the guest. But it's probably just the member saying, um, we're making this.
Did he walk out? Kind of sounded like he was leaving.
Okay, so, uh, I think we're gonna call the workers, at least there's three of us here. I didn't see Steve driving in the opposite direction when I was calling, so I'm not really sure if he had to run home or show up in a few minutes. And Dave Flatley has been excused. Um, so, we're gonna, um... As you all know, this is a special meeting, we're talking about 2072, and we're gonna start with public open session.
Uh, quick thing about, off the subject, just quick and brief. Earlier in the year, I talked about garbage, and they were shutting down. We were down in front of, uh, Health Committee today, uh, Dave was down there, uh, as well. Uh, talking about possibly, uh, kind of escaping garbage district, uh, disposal district. And it, uh, obviously needs more talk about it in coin dollars. And, uh, I believe registered voters definitely be trying to raise awareness and help, uh, get, uh, information out there as to how a disposal district could benefit the, the community, and, uh...
And make sure that people understand that a disposal and recycling district does not initiate way or form change can use contract with the county for curbside. It has nothing to do with that, curbsides stays the way it is. Um, what it does do is instead of our lovely privilege tax that we pay on the garbage and transportation as well as curbside, instead of that, this one going to the county, which of course we get nothing act for, it would stay inside of a point Robert's district to be used locally. So it doesn't indeed change anything to the can use contract for curbside, that stays the same. It just allows for the ability for Point Roberts to have some control of those tax funds, expand recycling, things of that nature. And again, it's about a ballot initiative, which means this is not county council saying, this is what's happening, this is what's going on, done already. It's about going on a ballot for people to vote what they would like. If people wanna have a district, and the majority votes for a district, then we'll proceed forward with the district. If the majority votes no, then it's business as usual. But at least it gives the community some control and, you know, feeling like they're actually having a say. And, but again, a lot of people that come here are like, oh, well, so this case for the curbside, it has nothing to do with curbside. The contract that created two thousand has stayed in place, there's still curbside, nothing changes with that, and it can work.
Okay, so you said at the beginning that it apparently we need to talk about this tomorrow?
All right, let's hope that we get put on the, uh, regular meeting, uh, new business, because it is going to need to be talked about.
Okay, well, this month's regular meeting has already been swatted for this continued 2072 work session stuff, because we had a couple meetings get geared around.
Yep.
Um, but your suggestion has been noted. Did the committee, did they vote to put it to council before ballot? Or did they come back and say Point Roberts needs to come? They asked for, uh, their cap is not involved at all in this.
They asked for...
No, and, and that's because earlier in the year, when I asked, I was shut down and said, no, we're not dealing with garbage by you. Uh, you informed me that we're done talking about garbage, so that's why we didn't have any talk out for cap. So here we are getting back to it, uh, but they have, uh, Tyler Bird specifically asked it, uh...
A petition.
A petition. We gave them some signatures, like we did the last time, four hundred signatures last time, over a hundred of them, a hundred and twenty of them were registered voters that were against the ordinance, that their votes didn't get to be heard back then. So we're gonna be doing, uh...
What, Health Committee, Department of...
Uh, actually Tyler Bird's one of the commissioners, but he does not sit on the...
He's the county council?
There's three orders on the, uh, committee, which are, uh, Brenner, P Cannon, and, uh, Frazee.
Did they say that the Health Department would run this petition?
No.
They asked for the community. Uh, I got the information from the auditor's office as to form of how a petition needs to be drafted, the size of paper, the margin, et cetera. We have to bracket ourselves, take it back into her, she then approves it for forming content.
Who's she, the auditor?
Yes, they approve it for forming content, um, because it has to be done in a certain way, because then it gets returned back to the auditor's office, and they vet the signatures for the portion that would increase the registered votes.
I have a question. Um, would this new group slowly be taking over the entire transfer station itself? So it, it, how do we not no longer have ownership of the transfer station?
Maybe it'd be now the Point Roberts Solid Waste District, rather than Lockton County Solid Waste District.
One of the things, um, this is for Stephen and myself, um, when, and I'm not sure of this, but I think when the county originally got the, the, um...
There's a statement through the Harpster Slam.
That, 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 it's not just the easement, I think the property, um, if it snowed off, the county has maintained, I think they have retained ownership of the, uh...
There might be a first round refusal back there.
I think first round of purchase by Harpster, yeah.
Might be.
So, we, just, just a warning, we have to...
Yeah, it could be that they turn it over, there's options, like they can turn over, or they can lease it to the district, same as they lease it out now. Right, so it would be a lease to the district instead of...
So they'll see all right if the county needs part of it.
Yeah, so the county would hold ownership of the property and lease it to the district.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
But is that something, that's something that, that even, I don't know if it was not a good person here from before, but it's something we have to...
Well, it is, for sure, you've got, we, you're...
Well, because the county board chair would stay there, so I'm assuming what it would be is the county would maintain ownership of it and lease it to the district. Because the county would share the county.
You'd have to look up how this originally structured, that's all.
Yes, based on a higher lease.
So, with this example, the way the hospital district works, and just connect, would be that you would rent over hospital district tax, the tax on the three hundred page to the hospital district is going in to allow us to vet that building from the Harpster and we subsidize the liar, we provide money to the healthcare provider.
Yes.
And in this case, you'd be getting surplus payment, it's mine to the county, you're saying it would pay to the district.
Right.
And the district would basically pay if they can, so, you know, two thousand or several entities. And maybe that's something about over that, you just call...
Also, then, coming from the transfer station itself.
What's I saying?
All the, the cell hall into the transfer station, that would be, the, the district would be in control of the...
Running, running the transfer station. Oh, that's, oh, that's a common reference.
Originally, what we actually asked for was just a recycling district. Because we have continually gone to Lockton County to ask for recycling information, this, that, the other. Hedjus has kept promising that he was gonna put an infrastructure money into the transfer station, we were gonna give this recycling information. Well, it never happened, because he kept saying he had these funds from his privilege tax. And, you know, Mark Robbins tried multiple times.
What is privilege tax?
The privilege tax is the Lockton County Solid Waste Tax.
The privilege of being able to get rid of garbage.
If you found out, it is called a privilege tax. Yeah.
And even now on cell hall, it was the latest one they put through, when you are hauling it yourself to the transfer station, there is a privilege tax for being able to get rid of your garbage.
Yes, eight dollars and fifty cents a ton. But, so originally, we just asked for recycling district, which would let everything alone. Basically, we just wanted recycling district where we could raise some money, do recycling, promotion, stuff like that, get some of those tax funds from Lockton County to do the education. And Jeff Hedjus came straight up to the podium and said, you can't have just a recycling district. It's all or nothing, either it's a recycling, can be disposal district, and you take over the transfer station, you can't just have recycling. So, kinda, I was like, all we wanted was to be, you know, and it has nothing to do with that, as they say, it says nothing to do with it, curbside stays the same, but if we keep asking Lockton County...
Paying out that curbside contract.
What's that?
The curbside stays the same, it goes, we, it goes into our taxes, it goes to the county, the county can take.
Okay, so that doesn't change?
No, that doesn't change.
So an additional privilege tax would create a solid waste district?
No, 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 so what you pay in a privilege tax right now, instead of that eight dollars and fifty cents a ton that's on our garbage bill, would not go to Lockton County. That eight dollars and fifty cents a ton would go to the garbage district in Point Roberts. The county contract that Dave has for the curbside at X amount of dollars per month per house has nothing to do with the garbage tax, the solid waste tax.
They have the money covering across the scale for all garbage that may be used, what, it's gonna have fun with this.
Okay, but I got, I got confused that, uh, they would control the transfer station. In the future, there would be just a garbage district tax, or there would be both the garbage district tax and the...
Well, no, right now, on your taxes, right, what you pay on your taxes...
Is there any garbage tax on there?
Yeah. The, the tax, the, the fee includes the tax.
Oh, okay.
Right, it's just when they pull out that tax amount, there's some of it goes to the state, some of it goes to the county, as the state has a garbage tax.
It's being charged at all, and can't do...
Can't do that, it's a contract.
For everything so long.
Not, not, not from, off the form.
Whoever, whoever the district hires to, like, right now, uh, Dave has been contracted with Lockton Lock English Streets.
So you have a different contract. It's whatever the district for contract for them.
Right, the district who contracts to get the recyclables at Point Roberts, the garbage at Point Roberts.
And then curbside on top of the garbage.
That would mean...
Basically, David would do the same thing he does now, he would, they would go around the garbage truck, they would pick up all of the garbage, they would take it to the transfer station, they have to weigh the garbage truck.
Yeah.
Because it's separate companies, right now, he has to weigh the garbage truck, take himself thirteen and a half cents a pound, because it has to be tracked to the transfer station.
Yeah.
He goes, he unloads, it goes back out of his car. So the only difference is, instead of him basically paying himself the thirteen and a half cents a pound, they would, that thirteen and a half cents a pound would go to the district. To then have to dispose of all of the waste out of everything else.
Right, you want that, so you want to be in front of the cost of the disposal.
No, the district is.
The district has employees, but it's not like the water district has a couple of employees.
It would be the, the same deal, there would be an electric board, but it would put a manager in place and... Just like the fire district too, it's the district commander, the chief, and on and on, right?
But there, there's just something due to...
So I can, I would be, I would be a more active organization, for example, about hospital district. Right, if we asked, hey, but they, all you really is, so, essentially...
It would be more like the water district.
Yeah, we want the water district.
Yeah. But just through some research and finding some things, as a district, we have the ability through the EPA to not haul our garbage all the way to Oregon, we can dispose it in Canada. Because if you don't allow a level agreement between the United States and Canada, between a district and a district, you can apply for EPA permit, and we wouldn't have to truck it all the way to Oregon. There's different things you can do as a district, rather than a private company.
Right.
And the district's gonna look into, like, the, the group of people that are working towards the recycling district have already researched more ideas than the Health Department or a for-profit business everywhere. It's not worth their time.
It also costs the prices for everybody, if we were able to do that, and do an EPA permit, and we're able to haul instead of all the way to Oregon, it can just go to the GBRD. That's gonna cost a lot, cut everybody's cost.
It's terrible cost to get rid of it on my side.
Right, because now, it's gonna cost, David wants money, and we have to bring that trash across the scale, because our cost is way less than what he's had to put right now. But currently, as a corporate company, he can't get those EPA permits, because it has to be a government entity.
Right.
Right, so it's gonna reduce his costs down.
I don't know if anybody has any questions for me, you have on email?
Any.
But, yeah, again, the original idea was just for recycling districts, because we can't get any help from the county.
Right, right.
And Hedjus said straight up, no, you have to be all of the things, so, hence having to move to plan B.
I, I even, I don't have to run through this hospital district, because, uh, are those paid positions? Or are those volunteer positions, not really voted, you know?
Um, they're not a paid position, it's like, you know, the hos- like, just like the hospital district, the water...
No, no, it's not, it's not right now, but it's...
Yeah, they usually, yeah, they get a skip in per, the, anything, nothing, no one's gonna be a rich guy.
I can tell you, it makes a big difference.
I'm just gonna make a point.
The partnership gives you nothing, the hospital district gives you a hell of a box of meat, it makes all the difference, like you showed me.
It depends on the apply laws of each one, of...
That's one, that's one, well, yeah, I don't know about you, probably, but...
The original idea.
Okay, I agree.
As far as 2072, I know I sent my information, David requested information, questions, the other day, I emailed mine, did Stephen ask for them?
Yeah, I saw the email from Steve Wolf passing along your information, but I haven't seen the attachment, so I didn't...
Right, I didn't.
I didn't see the attachment, but Steve Wolf passed your information on, he made a sentence directly to David, and then he sort of, I think, just let us know if he had done that. Yeah, just the questions, but he didn't actually ask your questions.
Right, so David is not here, and he's keyboard on here, probably no one provided.
Yeah.
I would be less than happy to be here, so, unfortunately.
Yes, I think it was just Stephen and I that actually posed questions so far, what I, my district sent him was.
I don't, I don't like the language, I think it's disgusting, the last meeting, but I don't need to...
Okay, so we're gonna move to, um, 2072 work session.
Y'all have your seat.
Thanks, Bennett.
I'll be here on first aid, uh, through the last thing.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so where we left off, according to my notes, is that we are gonna begin with 2072 350 building setbacks and buffer areas.
Yes, that is where we were.
Oh, that's, yeah, we were just starting that one, because we talked about, we talked about planted buffers and how that would be... Yeah, okay, how it could be redesigned, yeah. So, three more. So, I think we're, we passed one, and we're down, I've got some...
Were we making, did we make any proposed changes to one as part of that?
No, we didn't make, we just made some notes, it's not enforced as it is. Um, we were asking ourselves, is the fifty foot, in the open areas, is a fifty foot planted buffer too high potentially, but if it's... So I think these were questions we were gonna ask when we get a strong out here.
Right.
And then we were, you know, re-discussing, like, garbage still needs to get to that fifty foot buffer that he agreed to at one of our earlier meetings. And then it looks like we went to the 350 bracket two, and I felt that that was fine. Small town commercial along Gulf Road. Building setbacks should be reduced to ten feet, will, will it's oriented toward the street niche, they encourage. And at the front of the building, shall be designated for landscaping and deserting.
That's an idea that we're gonna have creating a, a western town, I think, with solar fronts.
Mm-hmm.
As a way to make sense. In the subsequent twenty years.
Correct.
But the wording is fine, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know, it's time.
Oh, I guess it's fine, yeah.
Okay, and then the next one is the provisions of 353, a lot of flag single-family residences in the resort commercial district of Point Roberts. But you would, now, the resort commercial district is like a, a Long Marine Drive and the Marilla.
That's, that's, that's the provision, says an additional five feet shall be added to each side yard and rear, uh, for each ten feet of building height or fraction thereof in excess of fifteen feet.
That's standard, where's that?
I don't, that's a sixty, that's a twenty, I think it's slightly longer, that's twenty-sixty. Twenty-three sixty-four, three fifty-three, the one that was referenced in that section, I was looking at.
Oh.
But don't, probably have a twenty-three foot, I don't know.
Twenty-one?
Yeah. So basically, you couldn't have more than, in excess of fifteen feet, you don't have one ten foot. You don't need ten feet above fifteen feet, so it's, it's a lot, it could be one. Yeah, so five feet could be added to each side, it could be added to each side, and a rear yard for a twenty-five foot house in that area.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, literally, it's a really tiny area here and here, so...
Oh, so...
Yeah, so we're talking about these... Oh, right, this is you, oh, right.
Maybe we should...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so it wouldn't apply to those.
All right, all right, the previous, the last section, both of them, I just...
Okay, so that's fine, the rest then. I mean, do we need to, how is this being required to have fifty foot setback?
Well, you have fifty, you have ten, twelve, thirteen.
Oh, I see, based on that, okay, yeah. Okay, so, um, this next one references 2072 654 and 675, even though it's 2072 401.
Right, yeah.
So the maximum building height in this small town commercial zone shall be forty-five feet. And then the height of structures also must conform to the view corridors of 2072 654 and the general requirement of 2080 675.
You need to know the space, helping to period all developments, and the site under design to show you access to that, not to my own making, maybe more use of development space, which means we need to...
Yeah.
Where, where is this now?
I just looked on it.
No, no, where is it, what part?
It's in 2075.
What part now?
Oh, small town commercial. Small town. Yes. Yeah. Now, where is it? Because it must be in here somewhere. Oh, there it is there. So that's all, that's the school area, you know, down on the tide bit and the golf road bit, okay.
So you can actually, you can actually have forty-five-foot tall buildings.
So how many stories do we create out of that three-story, right?
Yeah.
Four, correct?
I'm gonna think four. I would think three. It's fifteen for one and ten for every additional story after that. Because you figure it's like ten plus five-foot gable peak, so yeah, so when you hear twenty-five, that's two-story, thirty-five is three-story, forty-five is four. Okay.
So we've got a four-story building.
Because the way it's always been envisioned, so I don't see any reason why we need to take that on.
I don't, I don't have any, now, say the building, we get that one, I mean.
And then the maximum building height, all the zones retain at twenty-five feet. And I also have marked, like, I feel that that one's fine. And then through variance process, the maximum building height for any use outside small town commercial may be increased to forty-five feet under following conditions. But again, that's, they need a variance, so they're going to have to establish. As we say, most of our reserve commercials within the shoreline is just twenty-five feet maximum anyway. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I don't think we need to change any of this either. And same with the next one, building setbacks pursuant to this chapter and twenty-eighty-two hundred shall be increased, oh, you just read that.
Yeah.
Okay, so twenty-seventy-two, six fifty-three landscaping. Can we talk about this one? I've already, I have notes on all of this one. Did we jump to a landscaping discussion one week? No, I. That was pretty long. One. That's good. Yeah, it's a long one. Yeah, and then on the screening one, where it says using earth firms landscaping or building wall, and I think we were adding, we were gonna add, and living walls. You know, the new style of fabricated walls that have vertical living vegetation on them. So I have that noted on mine under the screening. Well, it says, uh, shall be screened using earth firms landscaping or building wall. Right. So that's a wall.
Right.
So I was, I think we were talking about adding or living wall. And then just a fabricated wall with vertical living vegetation. I think we're just adding it, yeah. Yeah, I think it is too, but I, for some reason, it's, okay. Um, the existing tree canopy areas as defined is all part of regular code or something there to honor change that I could tell. In the RRTZ and R districts. Yeah, it's all part of tree canopy, lots less than half acre may remove one hundred percent of the existing tree canopy provided thirty percent shall be replanted. So that's standard. Lots greater than or equal to one half acre shall retain thirty percent of the existing canopy, trees may be removed from the areas. So again, I've got all the things as checked off, as discussed, and agreed that they're fine where they are. I think we did. Trees on sensitive slopes, still all good, everything's good. And then on D, uh, let's see, two hundred meter protective upper of existing trees and vegetation shall be retained around a heron reef. And then I've got a note, you know, herons kill trees, how is this gonna be possible to maintain?
Well, it's two hundred, it's two hundred meters, that's not much.
No, no, it's not funny, it's not a mean protective area.
Yeah, it's a little bit odd. So basically, six hundred, well, six hundred is protected. Well, I imagine they might kill some trees, might go down there.
Yeah, when they're nesting in a tree, eventually they kill that tree.
Right. And, but, but they, they don't, they don't exist, and you know, they, they don't, I don't think we have any more heron, heron release on the point, unfortunately.
Okay.
But if you did, and if there was one, they would, or would need, that much, I guess, presumably, that must be, biology wasn't included, that they need that much more to not be.
So we'll just leave that one alone again. That's actually standard natural resources. We can make it smaller, you want it to. Right?
People are arguing right now.
Yeah, upper which is required for safety.
That's a little strange, actually, I think yours is a little bit funny, but actually, the Y E, the section E, I'm afraid I'm not only, uh, you see, shall be required on the point. That's a colloquial phrase. But I would think the statute may be saying.
No, it's definitely.
Oh, on the point.
So I think it's got the trees in the name of safety. No, I mean, features of the point shall be required on the point.
It's on the point.
Yeah.
But still, but.
Nobody else shall take place in such a, so. County require tree canopy areas to be retained on a site plan, thoroughly flagged. If that makes sense, it's all just to identify the tree canopy.
I think it's all standard still.
I think it is, yeah. A scale drawing has to include the water or property boundaries, that's all good, all the way down. Yeah, I've got it all perfectly good, all the way through that hole. Okay, still knowing, all good, all good, we're talking about this. Well, we weren't sure how to deal with this issue, we thought, no, this is the door access and not the weird driveway laws that they have. So this might have been one of the clear beings when it was, this might be the one that got it. That got derailed, um, so we should, we. So we think this might be a, uh. Strong, yes, this is, we think this might be worded for this reason, especially for all these ordinances are in place, because it's a water runoff issue. Right. And that's not something we can change anyway. So we've got this for label to talk, put Strong about. Well, just that we can't change it anyway, I don't think there is any concern. Uh, driveways and curb cuts should be minimized among collector rooms. I don't know that there was.
I believe this one, I came in and he said, is a castle could have two entrances.
Well, Rockin' East has two.
Oh.
But when they went to get a building permit to change the building site, the county said right away, you're gonna close one of those driveways. But I don't know. Yeah, I don't, so I don't think that we could change this even if we wanted to, because I do think all these little ordinances at the bottom indicate that it's outside of our twenty-seventy-two.
Right.
Yeah, okay, do we wanna take on parking, or do we wanna leave that for a special time when we can advise the public guys what we're gonna talk about? Because I know that we've got a few members of the public saying they want to talk about that issue. Okay, so let's, maybe I'll, should we do this one on Thursday, the June eighteenth? Okay, so I will, I'm gonna put out another bug notice that doesn't. June twenty-eighth, on Thursday. She said Thursday. She said Thursday, that's the important period.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll be parking for Thursday. And we'll get public, uh, at least advise the public guys what we're gonna talk about.
Should we hide in also the recreational vehicles, I think, as well, both other areas, like with trailers and stuff like that?
Yeah, that's a good one.
Like, is it worth to have runoff? Let me see in general, that was.
Well, we kind of did go through.
I think the lawyers, you decided that too, right, or leaving the RVs active, or were we gonna open, open discussion?
Um, I think we basically said, leave it as is.
Right.
Other than we wanted to make a clarification with Flip Strong that because of the way it's worded, it gets a little confusing. Because in the regular county code, you can have an RV stored on your property if you have a hatch.
Right.
The way ours is written, it's kind of obscure, like you can't.
Right.
So how wording leads to change of, leave the rest of it the same. But make sure that there's a clarification in there, if you have a single-family home, you can park your RV there appropriate screening. Because there has been people who've got the code enforcement, and actually it had to move their RVs off their property with six sites.
The language really didn't allow that.
It does. But it does, it's.
It's written a little bit oblique, but that it's focused on the ones who don't have a house.
Right. But someone in the county said, because of it says, oh, no more than this many days, no more than this many days.
No, it's very.
I think that, I think that conference was misread, misread earlier.
Which is why I think it would be best to look, look at it and let's make sure the language is sustained.
Yeah, we did talk about something in the last meeting.
Yes, we do. David is gonna reach out and be able to.
I'm, that's what he's had supposed to do, right?
Yeah, standard county code says you can't have more than one square foot shed without a rent. If you want an additional two square foot of a kid, you must go there. Which I think is right. And I think that's totally fine, that's why we go there, because you know what, leave it, because, right, we're not more special than anybody else in Lockton County. And if Lockton County code says nobody else can do this stuff, well, guess what, we're not going to be either. Yeah, but, yeah, if we can solve our problem with, um, commercial equipment storage. Right, and I don't think everybody, it'll be an easy shit on your property. Okay, so we're fully putting help, uh, parking over and I have to put out a notification to the public that we're gonna talk about parking. Linda, while you're talking about parking, could you add the, it has to do with parking, it's the Lockton County standard code, the ten point two four point zero three zero is one of them. Uh, it's the one where it says you cannot park on Gulf Road, you cannot park on. Did you say one zero dot two four dot zero three zero? Yeah, zero three zero, zero four zero and zero six zero. There are parts of standard county code for parking under the parking regulations that, I'm not sure if you read that meeting when I brought it up. It is so old, it basically says you can't park on Gulf Road, you can't park on that much drive, and one part of it actually says, um, anywhere in the flat area of Point Rock, which you can't have on, on street parking, but this tells you how old it references for us. Hey.
I think it's down there.
It's my patio. So just because this, you know, if we're going to do something, if he can, you know, get rid of. Or if we could make our overlay override that, like. That's what I'm saying, is just because there's actually part of it here, it says you can't park on the drive. Right here. You know, there's all these things, and it says specifically, there's not, there's supposed to be no parking signs all the way up in that bunker. Which of course isn't an offset.
Yeah.
I always tell the issue about Gulf Road, the world that businesses can't count parking on Gulf Road.
They can't, they can't.
They can't about their parking space, because there are no signs.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, also, because we had, just to add a discussion, that would be a question for.
Parking, just parking in general, we've talked about twenty-seventy-two overlay and regular standard county codes. If you give a credit, spark in my book, see if you can take care of. Sign is another.
I can find all the end of this.
Yeah, I have. So. And we could also use the twentieth to review what we've come to so far, like, we could go from the front to the back again.
Again, yeah.
And, but maybe we should project it so that public can see it as we go through it paragraph by paragraph, other than, you know, either that, print up a bunch of copies, but I wrote them up, print a bunch of paper. Because we're gonna be saying, we're gonna be reviewing for everybody that, this is what we've done, we've gone through line by line.
Could we hold up for the next special, when is, when is the next special meeting?
And I think that's for like the Strong.
On for July?
It's not for July, that's right. And I think.
Okay, I was like.
So, yeah, so. It was July ninth, and I think that's the one who's gonna write the Strong too, yeah, which is also. Um, probably, but I think that it, that would also be a great opportunity to go through line by line what we've done and have the public here and.
So we could do a version of the code with our change, with our proposed changes or comments, stuff in this way.
Right.
Or a word version or a PDF first, I think.
If we had an old-fashioned overhead projector, we could, like, you know, handwritten, no. No, it wouldn't be that hard, you're right.
That might work too, for Thursday, for Thursday. That might be harder.
That might be harder. No, I think we should just talk about parking and then go through and generically review what we've done. And see if there's any more hot spots we need to get to before the next special meeting with Strong. Now, um, I'm surprised Steve Wolf isn't here because this is his pet. Cause.
Oh, it's a.
Yeah. And we don't agree on a few things, so. Um, let me forward it up in here. We didn't want any internally lit illuminated signs, his group, and then, you know, this code came out saying that the illuminated sign shall be achromatic lettering, no more than six inches tall. Well, then when the gas station over there, I can't remember which one it was, US Center, wherever, they put up their new sign, all in achromatic lettering, I found them, right, white. Way more offensive than the colored ones, I think the red and greens were easier on the eyes, whereas the white thing, and the archway was, was light pollution and the white was glaring, glaring white. So I have a problem with that achromatic designation, I.
Well, this is actually, I think, yeah, I'm not sure about that type of sign that the gas station had, where that fits into this, because I think what this language intended to be talking about was a, was a internal, this sign that has a surf, has a plastic or glass surface based on that, that the letters going through and only letters are.
Not.
Whether color they are, you know.
Not them.
You know, yeah, but not just, just not based with the light bulb itself, just coming right at us, and that's not exactly.
What this is for.
That's not like internally, like, well, they don't, but, like, this is, it is illuminated, it says internally.
Internally lit is the one that has the plastic, what they did, and the bulb is. Like the actual shell of the shell sign, it's a big plastic shell and it's lit from the eye.
This is nothing that actually have any license on it, is not, I would not consider that internal, this sign that's basically, well, in the sort of this, that's coming from inside, it's nothing, it's it has, it has no shell, no covering, no covering, that dulls every about at night, it's like, it's like staring at your iPhone.
And that's why it's being the external.
Oh, term, so that's like.
And then the, the whole sign shall not rotate or otherwise be in motion, not shall have, like, like the marketplace does now, um.
Oh, right, where the text is in motion.
Yeah, where the text is in motion, uh, cannot display a video or animated image, but they already do.
Right, well, this, yeah, they're, they were violating the flag and not actually scrolling.
Yeah, but they're red-colored in.
Right.
And red sign at the corner is not red-colored in, but nobody's enforced him, actually, they have been shut down on the, on the scrolling. But I don't see how expensive, because when.
You can see what's wrong with scrolling.
I don't really hate the scrolling, and like, I remember last year, the red sign had fireworks, like a little pretend, you know, and they were red, white and blue. And they were little fireworks, fireworks, happy fourth of July.
We have the scrolling rather than, like, post every, like. That sounds a lot like.
I mean, not before that, turn on for good, I'm gonna be at, I'm gonna.
Oh, it's on that night.
Is it?
Well, I can't open that. I go by the daytime and. There's a landing strip at night, I went to go down and work at like eleven o'clock at night, and coming down, you're like, there's a landing strip. Yeah, you got away with like every cousin one. Not only can see it from space, next time I see him, I'm gonna come in and drop the watch. Drop the watch.
Can you drop the watch, please?
Just make them. Almost four, because they point right at you. They have stupid, right, drop the watch. Well, it's the same as Lauren's.
Is there something that I should have a deep control over?
Uh, there is a light pollution portion, not in twenty-seventy-two. No, but there is, right, we should, uh, regular standard code, so. Well, nothing, if we haven't created a special rule to override our standard county code. The standard county code basically would say that's way too bright, they would make him drop the lumens down to a certain level. Because especially, uh, they do lumens not just based on the actual lumens, they also do it based on the surrounding area. So that it's not blinding as an approach for, right, so, but. You get the county building officer down here in the dark, you know. Take a video of Susan Lawson. Okay, so, um, I think this is, these are all twenty-seven-two specific, all these light, uh, these sign issues. In the small town commercial, rural and reserves. Well, Linda, think about it, everyone takes pictures of the old brace sign, everybody loves that old brace sign.
Yeah.
In the last week's storm, I was in Vegas and sent the video, it was spinning.
Wow.
If Kenny wouldn't have been able to get up there and rebrace it and fix it, if it would have come down, I could not have put it back up because of those sign rolls. Those iconic signs cannot go back, that's too bad, because I really, I really don't see how they're, especially if this is, you know, made meant to be the small town.
Well, the issue, you know, is what, we, we're sort of used to what we have, like the leave sign, but if you were to envision a leave sign.
Every twenty feet.
Knowing on Gulf Road, it would be the tackiest place in the world, well, except for Las Vegas, but it would be the second tackiest place in the world, but if you had that kind of sign, because of the, you know, all, all the ones I say, you can use it as a vest, it's grand popping in.
Well, that's what I'm saying, because I think that you'd be able to say, anybody who had like a, you know, like the Nielsen sign. It started to break and become digressive, they couldn't actually replace it because it's overhyped and such. We actually took it down, I hand painted it to repair it, Kenny filled it all, and I had it in the garage, and I rehand painted that entire sign so it could go back up as a repair. Because they couldn't put anyone in, because it would eventually top. So certain things, it should be that if it was there and it's good, you can replace it, but anything new has to follow. Because that would be on the sign. They do have a date, for the purposes of this section, any sign erected or existing as of July first, twenty sixteen. But as a valid permit and does not conform, is a non-conforming sign, and those non-conforming signs may be maintained by painting, refinishing, repairing. All of that. There's special rules into the repairing and stuff, because if you get into a circuit and it keeps going, and you have to do any maintenance of it, it's considered a replacement. Yeah, any structural or other substantial maintenance, non-conforming signs renders the prior permit void and results in reclassification of the sign as an illegal sign.
Um, so what about no sign shall interfere with the night sky?
That's not gonna be possible.
I love that, but it's a major, major trend all around the world, and that's why people come here, it's one of the main reasons, it's not that light pollution, you see stars finally and so on. It's just stars are disappearing in all these cities and places. Um, there's such thing, it's direction in light of a sign down, I mean, it is not technically difficult, it's just you can't glare it straight up, you have to be. It's just you can't blare it straight up. You have to reconsider what the direction for the, and it doesn't make it less effective. The, the sign light goes to the person reading it, not to the sky. I would suggest that it's, um, that no sign should interfere with the night sky. Just light poohs, doesn't mean it's ineffective. Like, 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 uh, shell signs way, way overkill. I mean, everyone knows that. No, I mean, it's just.
But it's grandfathered in, so we can't.
Yeah, whatever, but it's way over. I'm just saying, like, the people up in the, you know, middle area, they hate it. They just hate it. I, I don't have to look at all of it. It wouldn't bother me.
But if they ever sell that gas station and somebody want, you know, he wants to put up a sign, they can't, that's.
Right.
They can't.
But, but maybe, at least in guidelines, that, that night sky is, is a priority for people living here, why they came here. I, I know no one here who came here for more lights. No, I don't mean to be cheap. No, no one I know came here for more light lights, like that she bathed his, you know, main street. No one. They came, they came running from places that he couldn't sleep. At least I did. A lot of people I know did. The people across the street from, uh, the, the new runway, Fred's runway, can't sleep at night now. And they're so scared. They don't, I mean, they don't want to upset anybody and they don't know what to do. So they've spoken to me and I speak to you and, um, they, they don't know what to do. They don't wanna stop Fred from making a living or anything. But what the hell is a runway? Have to do with lighting, have to do with making a living. He's mistaken. He doesn't live there. He lived across the street. He would never be there.
Yeah.
And so I, I would suggest that night sky is a priority and should at least be a guideline in decision-making on any signs.
I think, no, I, I would disagree. I think, I think the neighbors, I think they probably might be someone else and say it's a, how a place they booked in with the code, started this particular part of it elsewhere. And the code.
So isn't that light code? Isn't that in there?
It's in there.
It's not, it's twenty seventy-two, so it's.
No, since it's in the county code, isn't it night sky in there?
No, it's not.
Night sky. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty, um. They might, they might find something, something. Yeah, we don't wanna lose our night sky.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. That's what's so important. I mean, at least guidelines in the guidelines and at least in decision-making, um, great.
Yeah, here we go. Yeah, so the only other discussion I would make.
Just getting anxious, so I'll go see Danny Graham.
Yeah, okay. So I, I think this is.
Fine.
Rural, general, commercial area, rural, industrial, manufacturing, rural, I think all of that can come, like, I would like it that this section separated those areas, like maybe no signs in those, no illuminated signs in those areas, because we're talking rural.
Right.
You know, um, rural industrial manufacturing. Here, right here, it's a tiny little zone right here, this tiny little thing here. So they don't need any signs there, because that's all residential around them.
Yeah.
And then the rural, general, commercial, I can only find it up here. So there's a tiny bit on Tahiti, but this is all basically big land back here.
I don't want to lose that.
That's.
I love it, obviously.
Yeah, so they don't need any illuminated lights there, because we wanna also keep our fifty foot setback anyway.
Yeah.
So anywhere in here, I don't think they need any big illuminated signs. So I, and then, so I might, I think we might change this whole signs and flag holes, and then resort commercial, of course, is, that's the tricky one, because the marina is there. And they currently have externally lit signs. Because they.
They're external, right.
Yeah, externally lit, so they're already complying, but maybe, maybe, I mean, they also do have those big industrial lights, but.
Right.
But resort commercials also down here, and as you pointed out, it's up here and over here. So I think all of those zones should not be allowed to have any illuminated signs. And that could be what we do to protect night sky in some areas, but allow it in the resort, um, in the, what do we call this?
At least as a guideline, I mean, people, I think people do stuff without really thinking about what they do sometimes.
Well, the design guidelines. The design guidelines is another whole section we have to work, look at.
Yeah.
And we could put it in there.
You know, and like, so, so those people, the Hovens across from, um, Fred's place, what are they supposed to, I mean, are they supposed to put a, go to the county or is there?
Actually, well, probably shouldn't.
Or, they don't, they don't even want to be, I mean, well, no, I don't, well, they're talking. Why they even trying to be as heavy? They just want to sleep.
Right. Right.
So they live in hell and they come down here to, to breathe and then now they can't sleep.
So. Don't get, don't get, don't get, and use a better approach.
That's, well, that's what I said. Um, does, does that come through this committee? Should they come and, and should they write a letter to this committee? Is that not this?
No, because that, well, under CDRs and this committee doesn't take any physical action on CDRs. We just tell people who they can write to to do it themselves.
No, I think, I think, I, I think that's what we need, like, to look into the local codes. And they said. But not necessarily make a complaint, and then, but then knowing what, knowing that they're maybe in the right.
I think they are, right.
But if they, right, convince themselves, not, not to lose themselves, but convince themselves promptly that they're in the right. And then talk to, talk to Fred and say, this doesn't seem like it actually is, is allowed or could, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to make a.
Right.
Well, I'm not trying to get, make a code violation for you, but if you could voluntarily, basically, undo all the work you just did.
Well, basically, they're saying use, at least use less chime.
Right.
At least use dimmers.
Right.
At least not have them on all night, especially when there's no business or anything. They're leaving them on all night.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think those would be perfectly reasonable suggestions and they could even do that just now, because I think that's an angry thing to, to, whereas, or, as I say, they could first look into the code so that they know they're, if they're doing a proposition of.
Okay, but then as far as this committee goes, they could come here and say, you know, night sky's important to us. We are landowners on Tahiti and we would like, we would like this, any zoning or whatever.
It's got.
To be very sensitive to people's light. They see effects or help. Like, they could, they could, you can't, you can't actually get depressed with light. Okay, so they could come here with that.
They could, they could, they could come here with us to point out what you've said, that we should, like, I don't remember the, the public who encouraged us to propose some light restriction language in the code.
And it's already in the design guidelines.
And might not, might not come to us to say, we want you to take over this problem.
So they negotiate the solution, they do direct that or through the Canada, but as far as being part of this discussion, the vision of what the community, what we want in the community.
Everyone's fighting for that, you know, it's really not.
That's the, the design guidelines, which are part of our continued discussions, because it was, it was adopted in twenty seventy-two in its entirety. Um, this is back in the days when they were working on, um, the dark skies initiative is what it's called. So lighting that is low rise and directed downward to the site is preferred such as in the dark skies initiative. It's a warning that already.
Sorry, night sky, dark sky, sorry.
Dark skies initiative. Lighting should be the minimum necessary to ensure safety and security.
Yeah.
Excessive glare or brightness shall be avoided. Residential areas shall be shielded from excessive lighting glare. Lighting, so this is already all in here. This is already guideline.
So, so, let's bring it, let's bring it up. I mean, like, the shell probably doesn't know that it irritates those people up in the hill. I mean, if there was, if there was a mechanism.
Some of it's, if you gotta think of like, when, every, I think, when the thing was done, and Fred just put that stuff in. And that should have been done in accordance with the guidelines, I, I think.
Yeah.
The Shell station might be, some of that might be pretty big.
Yeah, that is.
Although I did speak to him about dimming, you know, I have a close relationship and they're totally open to the idea of dimming. They just haven't gotten to it yet.
Okay.
So, so, basically, what I'm finding is, you know, everybody's kind of protecting this kind of development, you know, mystique of really development, but as it turns out, when you talk directly to developers, they only keep anyone up all night. How that affect their business? Just makes you hate their business, you know, so.
I'm sure there's no business actually going on in my location.
So it would be good to have a gentle way that these things are culture, harbor culture, but not necessarily in a, you know, spank you way, but just, you know, like, like a human consideration way. Even like what they do was only, you know, legal and irritating, but they would consider not doing irritation.
Well, I think that they're in contradiction of these guidelines, which are already part of twenty seventy-two.
They are.
They already are part of twenty. So he's in.
No unnecessarily.
Dark skies initiative, but it says excessive glare or brightness shall be avoided, and it says lighting should be minimum necessary to ensure safety and security. But these.
So how can we?
These are guidelines.
How can we, so how can we bring attention to people again, without, you know, not trying to like ruin their day, but just like, just cut a copy of that and pass it circulated?
Well, I, you know, I, I'm always in favor of going and actually speaking to the person one-on-one. You say you have a close relationship.
Yeah.
About, about page two of the design guidelines. Yeah, they're under review and they are guidelines. These are not codes, like these are. These are codes. These are guidelines. And just say, you know, this was, this is White Roberts Community Guidelines, all of this lighting. And all you really have to do is turn those down to a nice soft dim to ensure safety and security, you know, re, shield your residential areas from the excessive light and glare, so excessive is the word I would point to. Just have a conversation with the guy. Just start circulating it. You know, I, I just imagine how, you know, community members get all up in arms about this very narrow focused idea instead of being inclusive, it's exclusive. I can talk to them just personally.
So every time it happens, the person who's best to speak to them could have, A, who's of a career.
Well, the best person to speak to them is your neighbor.
The guidelines, come for as a human to human.
Yeah.
And say.
That was that whole yellow heart campaign that went around when we were having, such difficult conversations in these meetings. Um, that somebody started that lovely campaign. Now it's sort of fizzled out, but basically it was.
Still can be here.
Talk to your neighbor.
Yeah.
You know, don't, you don't have to call a CDR. You don't have to march down to PerC and yell about, oh, my neighbor down the street's got too much X, Y, Z in their driveway.
Yeah. So, so I'm, I just, I want, on one bigger thing, I just think whatever changes happen, petty changes happen, we shouldn't eliminate, we shouldn't make this place not the place that people wanted to come to.
So is it?
And, and so whether stopping business or any of this anti-business stuff, it's, you know, a lot of us came from those places. I don't, I don't, you, you were born here.
Yeah.
I came running from all those places. I couldn't even sleep. You know, I couldn't, I couldn't stop, I mean, that, that's me. I don't wanna be too selfish, but I, I know I'm, all those people came from California and, and back east where I'm from. They, we're like refugees of, 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 how do you say, harmful development, I won't say. I, I know it's anti-development, but I'm like, why does development have to be obnoxious and hurtful? You know, and, and so whatever happens here, I was, I think that development should be encouraged to be amazing and, and, and promote wellness.
And safety. So I.
I saw the parking and design guidelines on Thursday.
Yep, and.
Same, that parking needs to be carried.
It's a.
Same with parking. It's a parking law there.
Yeah.
I guess I'll be here now.
I'm gonna put out a pause and, um, try to figure out like how we're gonna do this, because.
Well, there is. May I take? Well, can you, if, if, if we were to, if we were to show up, we could probably spend a lot of time with the world leader on Thursday, just talking about parking and sign guidelines.
Yeah.
Once I get, once I get something up. Uh, so I think I had to review everything that we've done so far.
Right.
But it's a fairly small group. We have a little discussion. I mean, good, it's hard for that.
When I was suggesting reviewing, one thing I'd forgotten, that we have, we still have to get to the design guidelines. And I think we should call it for tonight.
Yep.
And then, uh.
So.
Yep, and then you can be here again in two days. Our parking and sign guidelines.
Okay. Thanks.
Have a great evening.
Thank you, guys.